Becky, can you hear me?
Yes.
I had never seen an email from Town Hall about that report, so I apologize.
Well, it's Janelle, and Janelle figured, she's the new girl that's down in OMS, and she just figured that something was up, that it may have gone into your spam.
It must have. I haven't checked. That reminded me, I haven't checked to see if it did. But I saw it, and I'm like, this is the first I've seen of this, you know. So it very well may have.
Because I think that went out back the end of December to everybody.
The only other thing could be if I saw it and said, wasn't thinking. And I don't think the Budget Subcommittee's done one in the past, but I may have just said, it doesn't affect me, you know. So, but I'll get one done.
All right, yeah, I mean, if it's a paragraph or, you know.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna be detailed, because there's not much that we do, you know.
Right, no, you're not making a lot of motions, it's more, you know.
Yeah, it's just chatting.
Yeah, it's high-level thinking.
Yep, I will get it, you know, I imagine I'll have it, I hope I have it done by the end of the week.
Okay. Yeah, just send it back to.
I'll do it over the weekend if I don't get it done by Friday, so. And I did, I did know that was you that passed by me the other day walking, you know, so. I was, I knew it was you, and then you said, Mr. Gavin, and I'm like, you know, and then. But I did know it was you.
Okay. No, we love walking through that whole plaza, I mean.
That's what I do at, twice a day I do that.
Yeah. I did get home in time this afternoon to take a, like, fifteen-minute walk, it was beautiful out.
Yeah, I had a walk at lunchtime, well, actually, a little later than that, it was probably closer to two. But I walked from my house down and then take, I go around that digital building, and then come back out onto the road and then go into the plaza, walk down around the circle, over the bridge, back around and come back, it's about a mile, so, and I do it twice a day.
Good.
Yeah, keeps me a little bit active.
Yeah.
Because I'm not, I'm not going to the gym.
I, I can't believe how busy it is at work.
My, my place too, I'm extremely busy, I don't think I've been more busy at my work than during this, when you would think nobody would be, you know, there wouldn't be much going on, but.
I think everyone's really hoping that things ease up, they're gonna attempt to do the Babe Ruth Little League and whatnot, so.
I would imagine tonight's meeting is going to be very quick.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
Yeah, that ghostly thing, Chris, that's on me, if that's what you see, that, that.
He's haunted.
I, oh, I slipped on my driveway and cracked my computer and now there's a, it's, it's not good. I got a new one coming, hopefully.
Oh, you, you broke your PC or laptop?
It's the Surface, yeah, I did, I did.
That's not helpful.
It looked right in front of my five-year-old, she didn't say a dang thing, she just.
You can borrow mine, I, I very rarely use it, you know, I use it for our meetings, that is it, nothing else.
There should be, I should have a new one on its way.
Yeah, I, I use mine all the time, because my PC is in the basement, so. It's easier to get the stuff done.
Did a kid that was a police officer and act and die recently? He passed away, do you know?
I don't know, I hadn't heard that one.
I'm also not good at acting news.
Okay.
Fred, you hear that, Chris?
My neighbor, my name, his, this guy's ex-wife, girlfriend or ex-wife, lives with my neighbor and their son, and she told, you know, she, she was telling somebody that it was such a terrible week, because she had to tell her son that his father had died. And I know that he was an acting policeman, because he's come here, you know, to the house, which is next door to me, I can see the driveway from where I'm sitting, and he's come in the cruiser, because I, why is there a Maynard Club, it's always, it's an acting club. So he used to come to visit his son in the cruiser.
I hadn't heard that, I typically would hear something like that from, like, you know, contacts over in acting.
Kind of, and it was, it was as recent as, like, you know, this, like, during COVID, like, this summer, spring, summer, so. I don't know.
Interesting. Was Armand able to join us tonight, Greg, did he get back to you? I didn't see.
Today, he said he would be here.
Okay, that's fine, no worries.
Like thirty seconds to go, so he's.
Oh, good. And there he is. Hi, Armand.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Excellent. Get my script done.
I got my COVID appointments. I got, I got one this Saturday and one, two, three Saturdays away.
Where?
CBS Pharmacy in Woffam, actually.
How did you qualify? What'd you say, you're a smoker?
They sent me a text saying, here are your two appointments. One for me and one for me and one for my wife, I think my doctor must have set it up.
Very cool.
So I was like, I'm in.
Congratulations.
From Florida really soon. My mother, I was gonna visit my mother, and she said, you can't come here till you have the vaccine.
So about the, did you read about the Boston Health Commissioner, who is, who is directing the COVID activities from Hawaii? She's been, she's been there since it started.
She's quarantining.
That's been, yeah, I know, terrible, all right. I will, so I will get started at seven o'clock, so I will start. We've got a very short meeting tonight, but I will start with the remote-conducted open-meeting script. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Please permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Chris? Excellent, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am here, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative, Greg?
Yes.
And Becky, yes, excellent, all right. Good morning, good evening, this open meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I'm saying that for the last time, on, on Tuesday, I will say, the Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, accessible, publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attend, and livestreamed on Facebook, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care and not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for the meeting tonight, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members and the public follow along on the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless I know it otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct for our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks, which I'll go down the line of members inviting each by name. To provide any comments, questions, or motions, please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your computer or phone when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way to help generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Or commit, if members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Friends with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. I'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only, and once a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any other comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll-call vote. So that being said, do we have any public comments tonight? Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I want to thank my board members for coming together and being able to, to come to this meeting on kind of a shorter notice. You know, in the time of COVID, we're trying to help community members as much as we can, and this was kind of a, this is something that came up right after our meeting last week, and it's a deadline for this weekend, so we're trying to make sure that it could work for them, so.
For a worthy cause.
Exactly, so I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the use of Crow Park Parking Lot by Maynard Girl Scout Troop 67540 on Saturday, February 27th, and Sunday, February 28th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for a drive-through cookie booth, and I will authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Okay, Armand and Chris, second and third, all right, Greg?
So it's exciting having a drive-through cookie, no, it is, but I, I do also want to echo what Justine said. I appreciate the board coming together to help with this on such short notice, but I do think it's a worthy cause, and it's not like we have any issues. I don't, I, I recommend the board approve this. We even, I, I'm actually really impressed with the Girl Scout, Ms. Ramirez, who I don't know if she's on. Ms. Ramirez, are you on the line? I guess not, so we, but she was very responsive. You can see by all the information that she provided, all the documentation, the flow chart, the PPE plan, she was good. So I think it'll be a good, good little event, and hopefully the weather hangs out, and.
All right, so it, so I'll try one more time, is, is Ms. Ramirez on the call?
Or, or anyone from the Girl Scouts?
Okay. Okay.
Someone is raising their hand from the Girl Scouts, maybe?
Yeah, looks like, looks like.
Did you, oh, looks like, oh, hey, how are you?
Hi, it's not my name.
I know, I was gonna say, that's not you.
I, I don't know, am I muted?
No, you're not.
I'm on, I'm sorry, I just. Sorry, this is my daughter's school name there, but I'm Holly Murray from Maynard on Maple Street. And I did talk to Jen yesterday about her plans a little bit.
So are you working with, are you guys in the same troop or no?
No, no, but, I mean, interested in doing it, I didn't realize all the things that went into getting permits, and I didn't even know we could do that, so she, she went through all the, all the stuff to try to make it happen for her troop, and then maybe other troops for a different weekend, is that right?
I, well, we haven't heard anything, but, you know, it's one of those things, so I will say off the bat, what we would like to do is, if something like this is something that, you know, kind of like Metro West Kung Fu using Coolidge Park or Mistress or whatever, that we have a little, that we have the notice, we need to have it heard at a regular board meeting. So you would, we'd want to know, like, probably ten days before the event, in order to, like, this one was really quick for us, but we would definitely like to have, you know, in an ideal world, we would find out by today that they want to have it next weekend. So for planning purposes, if this is something that other Girl Scouts are gonna try to do, that would be most helpful for our board.
Okay. Yeah, I do know that cookie season ends at the end of the month, of March, I think.
I say, is it, is it March, so it's not the, the end of, like, this weekend is the end of?
No.
Okay.
I think at the end of March.
Okay.
Maybe this is the last time, we're definitely, or even for you, Holly, if you, if you're interested in applying, if you want, if this all goes well, which I think it will, I think the town seems more than happy to accommodate, so I, I, this is good. This is also kind of a sign of the times, that we're going back outside, everybody, I'm excited.
Thank goodness, all right, so, so we don't have any, so we don't have Jennifer here to ask any questions. Does anybody have any concerns about this at all? Question, I mean, questions for Greg? Okay.
I, I had mentioned to Greg that, you know, this thing seems such, many times we approve, and I know that there's requirements to approve, but maybe the board should consider a policy of some type where we give authority at the beginning of each year to certain things that are going on. For example, you know, if there are street parties and things like that, what might not need to be taking up spots on the board's agenda if the board, you know, gives authority to the town administrator to approve under certain circumstances with approval from the police and fire, et cetera, so that we don't have to, you know, in that way, somebody like the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts that wanted to hold something on a public property, wouldn't necessarily have to wait for the board to meet, but rather could go to Town Hall, get an approval by a pre-authorized process that we established, just something to think about going forward, to try to streamline the process. You know, I think we did it somewhat for street parties, and then we fell off the wagon on that, in a way, and that it goes, still goes on to the agenda as a consent agenda item.
Right.
You know, but.
Almost like it could be, you know, if the permission was given, it could be included almost in correspondence, that.
Yeah, this, by the way, this is going on, yeah, or this has already been approved. And as I said to Greg, if it was something unusual, like if somebody said, oh, we want to sell, you know, drug paraphernalia, you know, then that, that's something that, that, you know, I think Greg would, or TA would recognize, might need to be approved. But a routine, a routine thing, I think we can probably take it off our plate and make it more streamlined, just something to think about.
I'm also wondering if, when we finally finalize the, the park permitting process, say that three times fast, in theory, that could also.
Theoretically, yeah.
Right, if that, you know, if that comes about, when, if it comes about the way we see it coming about.
Yeah, you know, like Becky said before the meeting was beginning, she said that she had gotten something from, you know, the, the Babe Ruth baseball that wants to use the Crow Park this summer. You know, maybe we, maybe we could, there might be some reasons not to, and that would be a discussion for the board to have, as, you know, hey, we, maybe we shouldn't do that, but just to sort of ease up, and therefore it's routine, doesn't need to clog up our agenda.
Yeah, that sounds good, it sounds, it sounds like something we definitely should consider, so I don't know, Greg, if we want to put that, I think that we're, we're okay with our meeting for this week, but can we put it on the, maybe on the 16th and, or?
I think I recommend it going through the vehicle of reviewing the parks, parks and grounds.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
So if, if, then it'll just be part of that conversation.
Although some of these things could be outside the scope of parks and recreation, for example, the, the street parties, if we wanted to actually make it, so we could, we could just put it on as a policy, a policy discussion of some type, in addition to having it part of the rules and regs.
Okay, yeah, okay, anybody else have anything? All right, then, all in favor? So this will be Saturday, February 27th, and Sunday, February 28th, from nine to one. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that is fantastic, congratulations. Congratulations to the Girl Scouts and to everyone who can now go drive and buy cookies, so.
Watch out for the cookie monster.
All right, so we'll move on to the town administrator report.
No formal report, but been a busy week, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Human Relations Committee, Board of Health, this evening's meeting, Master Plan Implementation Committee starts tomorrow night, a lot, lots going on.
Busy, busy week.
Busy week.
All right.
That's all.
Excellent, sounds good. I really don't have much, I, I share, I, I saw a post from Kate Hogan today that CBS and Maynard is going to start distributing vaccines, which is great. I also saw the feedback that they were full already, so, you know, I know it's gonna be one of those things that is going to take a while, but the closer we get it to our, our hometown, and the closer the availability, that's great. And as I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, we will be, as of March 1st, we will officially be a Select Board moving forward, so congratulations, everybody. And so I will, I will try to remember to make that, make that change while, while I'm speaking. And other than that, that's all I have, David?
I have nothing.
Excellent, Armand?
I don't have anything.
Jeff?
Real quick, I, Maggie Day presented Indigenous Peoples' Day to the Human Relations Committee. When was it, was that last night?
Monday, I think.
Thank you, I forgot what the day was, not what Monday was. And they, they endorsed the change of the holiday to Indigenous Peoples' Day, so we would like to come up to the Select Board sometime in the next few meetings. And I attentively said the 16th to the United Indians of New England, and so if we could get that date, great, if not, we can reschedule with them as well. But the, you know, like us, further in advance, we can schedule it better, so we're, we're looking forward to coming and having them present to this body.
Oh, oh, so, okay, I thought it was gonna be that they were gonna present to the HRC, and then HRC was gonna give us a recommendation, or is that not?
So they, yeah, so the HRC recommended endorsing the change of the name, and they're going to write up a formal recommendation and hopefully endorse it before the 16th. I, they, they moved quickly, and so if we could get on for the 16th, great, and if not, that's fine, we can get on what we can get on.
Okay, all right, all right, sounds good, and I will talk to Greg about that, and anything else?
I had a couple of questions about vaccines, I don't know, Greg, if the Board of Health is gonna be talking about them, but I was wondering if there's any transparency to how many vaccines that we'll be getting at the CBS and Maynard, if that's gonna be the major distribution for local sites. You know, I'm, I'm hoping that we would get priority, say, compared to a CBS in Natick or Foxborough, where they have a max vaccination site already set up. And then the other question I have, is there any way that we can ask our local CVS to set up a waitlist so that people don't have to go through this incredibly frustrating process of, you know, as Justine mentioned, all the spots filling up and checking back and spending hours on a process where they could just say, you know, here's my application, can you put me in line and let me know when the next vaccine slot will be available? I just think that rather simple tweak to the process could save a lot of frustration and a lot of anxiety for a lot of people in town.
I will say, I was on the Board of Health meeting last night, and as of last night, they didn't know that Maynard CBS was getting the vaccine, so I don't think they've, you know, I, I don't think that they had, you know, that they've talked that much about that part of it.
I wonder, Jeff, if, if a program like you are outlining would put stress on CVS's employees and burden them with having to contact people versus the program is supposed to be sort of self-sufficient by the state. Granted, it's not working properly, but.
I, I can't imagine that the burden on the employee, whoever it is, whether it's a town employer or a CVS employee, is going to be more than the burden we've heard about from residents.
Oh, that, undoubtedly, that, undoubtedly, that's true.
I, I, I mean, you have a point, but at some point, it's, it's just ridiculous what people are doing, having to, you know, and you hear two people, one person gets a vaccine appointment, and then another person, five minutes later, comes by after filling out the whole application, and they have to come back through the next three days, so it's, seems somewhat arbitrary about, you know, whether you logged in at the right time to get these appointments, so it's.
To your point, Jeff, the CBS in Wayland does exactly what you just said, because I was in there, and they have an actual process where they fill in the application, and they, you know, and there's a woman there that, you know, takes the application, and so I don't know if the other CVSs could do the same thing.
It can be done, and it would be nice to point that out to our CBS.
So they, they like call people from CBS?
Yep, yep, the, the, in fact, she's, she's one of the managers at CBS that handles that whole process. When I was in there, I was just talking to her.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much, because I, I mean, I know that, maybe we could, someone, I'm saying we, but it's not we. Someone could have a conver, might be able to have a conversation with CVS, but they're, they're a private company, so it's not like we could say, this is how you should run it.
Is there a way to use CARES Act funding somehow to provide the resource support that David was talking about?
We were gonna do that on our end, but then, when I found out I couldn't do my own clinic, it just wasn't worth the fight, not fight, but like, I had to, I had to write a letter and justify it to A and F Secretary and all stuff. So then, the letter started, and then I realized we weren't gonna do it, so, I don't know, it's a good question. And, and I can ask CVS what they need, what their processes, do they have a waitlist? I think, I think it's all good questions, Chris, were you gonna say something?
I, I thought it was all, from what I, from what I understand, I, I've been told it's all through the system, it kind of the luck of the draw, like, you can end up, they'll end up telling you, go to Brookfield, Mass, which isn't exactly next door, you know, from, from Maynard, and that's where, that's what pops in your, you know, that's, that's your choice.
No, no, because I have four people that I already know that they have. No, no, because I have four people that I already know that they have, um, appointments for CVS here on Friday, from the town.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying they can't, but, but what I'm saying is, is the four people may have got lucky and got them in a local place, but others are being forced through the same system. It's kind of like the luck of the draw, you know, you might sign into your, I was watching it go down the last couple of days and you sign in at seven thirty or eight, in the morning and you keep hitting refresh, and it's showing zero, 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 all of a sudden, anyone that overnight knew they were getting the vaccine and when, their, their availability populates and you're talking four, five thousand tests or more, and they're gone within three minutes. And people are, you know, people are taking them wherever they can get them, hopefully close to home, but, uh, you know, there are people that are going, you know, if you, if you hit the all button, you know, you click the all button, you're looking at, you know, anywhere in the state. And it's, that, it just becomes the luck of the draw, but I haven't heard of anybody in a, you know, anybody taking a physical paper application and then doing the legwork of calling people as they get it, I think that violates the, uh, state's rules, but who knows?
Well, so, so Greg, if you're, if, if you'll read, if you want to reach out or whatever, and at least ask the question and, and see?
Yeah, I'm curious.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, uh, Chris?
I'm all set.
You're all set, all right. Then, uh, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, everybody, excellent, all right, good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Bye, Becky.